Welcome to our meeting. The date is April 8, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, I ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hazi will be absent. Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Matthew Gleason, the finance director, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator and chief financial officer, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the public works director. Before we proceed, I would like to make a couple comments about the Nebraska Legislature's LR-17, which concerns Camp Augustine. We, at this time, are in the early stages of an exciting new era for Grand Island and outdoor recreation in Nebraska. On March 25, the legislature approved LR-17, which is a resolution to approve the Nebraska Gammon Parks Commission's intention to incorporate Camp Augustine into the state park system. Camp Augustine is now one step closer to opening the door to expanded camping, hiking, and unrivaled access to the Platte River. This is a very big deal, not just for Grand Island, but for the entire state. It means more opportunities for families and outdoor enthusiasts to experience everything our region and city has to offer. I want to sincerely thank the Nebraska Legislature for their support and extend a special thank you to Senator Dan Quick. He championed this effort from the very beginning, and it was his leadership and vision that helped make this possible. The future of outdoor recreation in Grand Island is brighter than ever before, and I can't wait to see Camp Augustine thrive as part of Nebraska's world-class park system. This is a win for all of us, and it's certainly worth celebrating. Finally, I thank the Grand Island City Council for purchasing Camp Augustine when it became Continuing with our agenda, individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Council members, do you desire to remove any of tonight's consent agenda items for Hearing none, we shall continue. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. And, sirs, I added your names to the list. We shall continue. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 6A through G? Mr. Lanfair.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through G.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stelk.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Ladies and gentlemen, we now take up our public hearings. The first being 7A, public hearing request from Southeast Crossings LLC, DBA Borders Inn and Suites, 3333 Ramada Road, Grand Island, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license. Mrs. Grenier.
An application for a Class C liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on March 18, 2025. A notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on March 29, 2025. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on March 20, 2025, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspection. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
A motion is in order, council, on this resolution. Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve 2025-121.
Thank you. And, Mr. Lanfair.
I second.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Mr. Robuck, your license was approved. Public hearing 7B, public hearing request from Sayjon Bania, DBA Everest Indian Kitchen, 316 North Pine Street, Grand Island, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license. Mrs. Grenier.
An application for a Class C liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on March 18, 2025. A notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on March 29, 2025. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on March 20, 2025, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspection. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Lanfair, please proceed.
I move that we approve item 2025-122, approving the liquor request.
Mr. Brown.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Public hearing 7C, public hearing on acquisition of public right-of-way and permanent easement for South Locust Street improvements, Foner Park Road to Second Street, project number 2021-P-6, Ortiz, Riki, Stevens, Hammond, Green, Saron Ortiz, Geta Gomez, Maring, and Please proceed.
Good evening. This is another round of property acquisition for the South Locusts project, similar to the ones we've been doing for many, many meetings now, but we're getting to the end of the list. There will still be a couple more, but just a continuation of that process.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz.
Sorry. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve 2025-TAC-123.
And, Mr. Conley.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
We now take up our resolutions. 8A, approving request from Hooker Brothers Sand and Gravel, Inc., for conditional use permit to operate a sand and gravel operation located in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, 33-11-9, and northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, 33-11-9, east of Blaine Street and north of Shimmer Road. Mr. Nabody, please present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was an item that was on the meeting two weeks ago. Council did hold a public hearing. There were concerns on this regarding the wells on the neighboring properties, and council did ask that we would bring this back with a condition to address some of those concerns. We did put that... City Attorney and I worked on those conditions and probably went through eight or 10 iterations as we were coming up with what we're presenting to you this evening. It did not change any of the other conditions in there, but we are adding or proposing to add one condition here that would basically state the applicant will take reasonable efforts to avoid negatively impacting public health, safety, and welfare during the duration of this conditional use permit, such as those that may impair wells on neighboring properties. Applicant understands that in the event operations create a future negative impact on public health, safety, and welfare, this conditional use permit may be terminated by the Grand Island City Council prior to its scheduled expiration. That would force it to come back to council for a council decision. That's typically the way conditional use permits are terminated, other than expiring. We don't anticipate any major issues with the wells. There are... Those wells have been there. There's a lake a quarter mile to the east of... To the west of there, or east of there, there's a lake a quarter mile to the east of there. There's a lake a quarter mile to the north of there. There's a lot of lakes in that particular area, so we're really not anticipating there are going to be any issues. This also does deal with the health and safety, which are the things that the city council has purview over, and hopefully would minimize our chances of being caught up in a civil dispute between property owners.
Mr. Hanson's not here tonight.
Mr. Hanson was here. I read him this. He decided he didn't need to stick around.
Thank you, Mr. Nabody.
If you look on your sheet, he was signed up to speak on the top, and I read him this, and he went, "Okay, I don't need to stay."
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve Resolution 2025-TAC-112.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard. Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson.
Just one other thing. The request was for 20 years, but the recommendation is still for 10.
Is for 10, and the resolution is for 10 years. And that is because our... That is our typical timeframe for sand and gravel operations, especially those that are located this close to the city.
Right. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Lanfair.
I got a little education on sand pits when I was on the county board. These are beneficial. If you really want to grow Grand Island, you need what they produce to make cement. You know, you can only crush so much old cement and reuse it. And the factory mains, the ones that they approved by the county board, there has been no negative consequences of it. So these are a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair.
Please vote. Mitch, did you want to talk again? Your speaker came up. Motion adopted.
Resolution 8B, approving a job training economic development program, LB-840, grant to GIX Logistics, Inc., and termination of unused 2023 grant. Mrs. McAlune.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, in 2023, the city council at that time approved an LB-840 grant for GIX Logistics, Incorporated. Due to industry changes and economic factors, GIX applied for a new grant that will cover the costs of additional specialized employee training to address those industry changes and increased automotion... Or automation in the transportation logistics industry. Based on the application for amendment, the city attorney's office prepared a new contract that is specific to training of employees. GIX Logistics has reviewed and approved that contract form and is seeking council approval of their amendment request. The training costs would be reimbursed at 100% of the training costs submitted with the amendment application. Employee training is an eligible expenditure under the city's LB-840 program, and both Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation and city staff have recommended approval. This would, if approved, replace the previously approved but unspent 2023 LB-840 grant. If approved, GIX Logistics would be asked to complete and execute the attached job training contract assurances agreement, which, as I mentioned, they've reviewed and tentatively approved. This would be a replacement of the existing 2023 grant. There is no additional fiscal impact. And, as I mentioned, as program administrator, I recommend approval. We also have Mary Burley, executive director of the EDC here, to answer any questions on this application.
Thank you. And I also believe Jim Purney is here to answer any questions also. Thank you for being here. Council members, is there a motion? Mr. Pollak.
Yes, I would make a motion to approve 2025-124.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
I second.
Discussion.
Motion adopted.
Resolution 8C, approving economic development program, LB-840, grant to Dramco Tool Company for job creation and training. Mrs. McAlune.
Thank you, Mayor. So Dramco Tool Company has submitted an application for LB-840 funds to support its efforts to hire and train 10 new employees over a five-year period, increasing its total full-time employee count from the current level of 58 full-time employees to 68. On March 17, Dramco submitted a revised grant distribution schedule, which replaced the schedule in the original application. City staff recommend approval of it, and then Mary Burley has a presentation on the application itself.
Mrs. Burley. And for the sake of the record, please state your name.
Mary Burley, representing the Grand Island Area Economic Development Corporation. I'm also joined by members of Dramco Tool, including Bill Cook, Justin Fennig, and Todd Jacobson. Dramco Tool is located at 502 South Claude Road. Dramco Tool, if you remember, had a successful 2019 LB-840 contract in which they exceeded contract expectations by hiring the appropriate amount of employees but paying them more than what was contracted to be. And so we are here in front of you today to apply for an additional LB-840 application. Dramco Tool Company designs, engineers, creates, and builds custom machinery, molds, and dyes. So they don't necessarily create the product, they create the product, the mold, that then goes on to manufacturers to create their product. And they certainly describe their company much better and articulate than I do, and so I'd like to share.
Well, the typical thing at Dramco is a lot of different variety of things being made, whether it's fabricated parts, mold-related components, or molds themselves, die components, piece parts, some specialty items that might come from our water jet, or some of the specialty machines that we have in the shop. We make dyes, molds, special custom machine for fabrication for factories, precision parts, laser parts, welding, water jet. We do a lot.
Dramco Tool is certainly a H3 industry, high wage, high skill, high demand, and they are eligible for LB-840 under multiple uses and business activities in our program, including the manufacture, artisan commerce, conductive research and development, processing, storage, and transport, sale of goods as commodities that are sold or traded across interstate commerce, and then headquartered facilities located in Grand Island. Today, Dramco's employee base is 58 strong. Dramco intends to add 10 new employees over the course of five years at an average minimum wage of $25 per hour. We are requesting a total of $160,000 in LB-840 incentives over the course of five years. That is broken down into $120,000 for job creation for those 10 new employees and $40,000 for training. This training of $40,000 is just 10% of the actual onboarding and training costs that Dramco Tool will have. Again, this is dispersed after successful workforce audits and through 2029. This is an additional breakdown of how those funds will be distributed based on the number of employees they hire throughout that five years. 2026, they anticipate they will hire four new employees, 27, two, 28, two, and 29, finally, with two new employees, for that total of 160,000. Now Dramco Tool is not only an exceptional business partner in our community, but also a leading and premier community partner. If you all remember, in 2017, Dramco was the first company across the state of Nebraska to step up and take on an apprenticeship, a high school apprenticeship. That allows those kids to touch and feel what a career could look like right here in Grand Island. It's an incredible opportunity for kids to have, and it enhances our ability to retain that talent across Nebraska. Dramco Tool hasn't stopped. While 2017 maybe put them in the spotlight, they haven't stopped. They continue to offer tours, they open their doors to any and all in the community, and then most recently, they partnered with the Hall County Warriors Memorial Project and crafted and developed the globe and the art piece that you see there that's placed at the VFW. So with that, we request that you approve Dramco Tool's LB-840 application of $160,000 over the course of five years, and help me thank them for their contribution and continuing capital investment in Grand Island. Thank you.
Mr. Fennig told me before our meeting started that they are very busy, which is good news for Dramco and Grand Island. Mr. Lanfair.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to move that we approve 2025-125.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Conley.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Brown.
I just want to thank you for the Hall County Warrior Memorial you did. Awesome. I get remarks from all over the country about that, but thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
I was going to say that too, but you took it. That's one of the most awesome memorials that I've ever seen. I was there at the dedication, and it was just a wonderful occasion for everybody involved, but it's such a unique and powerful... It's kind of simple, but it's very powerful when you look at how we're connected around the world. So that's also awesome as well. Mary's probably going to guess what I'm going to say when I talk about LB-840. I've told her and her predecessor that LB-840 was never meant to be a savings account. It was always meant to invest in businesses that meet the criteria that it entails. And this is, again, two examples that we've had tonight. It's not only for business recruitment, it's also for business retention, it's for training, and it's also for expansion. And you saw the qualified list of activities that make this happen. So again, we've got two examples tonight where we've been able to, hopefully, depending on our vote, see further expansion opportunities. We've seen some training changes due to changes in the workplace. The whole system that GIX Logistics is involved in is changing. The model is changing. Things are happening, and employees need that training. So it's just another good example of those dollars being invested where they should be, and we're always grateful for businesses that are staying in Grand Island, and when you can expand, we expand. When we need to retool a little bit, we retool to go forward. So again, thank you for all of you that are here tonight. I appreciate it.
Mike, I need yours yet. Motion adopted.
Item 9A, discussion of recommended updates to Chapter 27 procurement.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. So we are proposing quite a few changes in Chapter 27, and so we didn't bring it as an action item tonight, so this is more of a distant and informal, let's talk about what you see, the difference in the procurement code, and we'll go from there. So we're just going to start off with the key changes to Chapter 27 of the procurement code. So one of the first ones is it's a reorganization and consolidation of sections to avoid duplication, contradiction, and a streamlined ease of use. I know when staff has used City Code, there would be sections that kept repeating or would contradict each other, so this is our attempt to clean this up and make it more streamlined. Second part is transitioning of our purchasing agent responsibilities to myself, the assistant city administrator, CFO, whoever is in that position. So a little history behind this. We haven't had a purchasing agent since the late '90s, and then that position actually rolled into our accounts, payable person. Yeah, it's not loading. Here we are. So we had an employee who was hired as a purchasing agent in the finance department in '96. A few days later, in '96, she transferred to the legal department, and that's where it's been housed ever since. So... And then in July of '96, employee two was hired as administrative secretary, purchasing technician in the legal department, and then employee two left in December of '96, and then employee three started. So I did have names in here, so I took them out, and that's why I did the numbers. So employee four retired as purchasing technician in '97, and employee five took that place. And so it was really revolving at that time, and then it just... It stayed in legal department. So our intention is to get it out of the legal department, kind of help them out, because sure, legal does have a role in purchasing, but not so much as the purchasing agent. Their role is more in does the... Is the contract legal? Were the bids solicitations legal? Things like that. Well, another change is updating the formal procurement limits from 30,000 to 50. So now we have from 0 to 10,000 is just very small purchases. They don't need POs, they don't need quotes or anything else. don't need quotes or anything else. From $10,001 to currently 30,000 is they needed three quotes, okay? That still did not come in front of council unless there was a contract involved. If there was, the council would approve that in a resolution and have the mayor sign. So we are proposing to move that to 50,000 for our purchasing procurement. This is in line with the state of Nebraska, they just changed theirs in July of '24 up to 50,000.
Mr. Brown, it's been 30,000 for many years, hasn't it?
It has, it has. So we're coming across a lot of quotes at like 35 to 40 and things like that. So it really kind of slows down our process. I understand this process, you know, the council wants to approve on all these, but one of the internal controls that we have to which you approve is budgets. Directors have responsibility staying within their budgets, so that's just another way that we are making sure that, you know, they're spending properly. So we're also, another major change is transferring small contract approval under bid limits, this would be under 50,000, from City Council to Mayor or at his or her discretion, the purchasing agent. So that, you know, if there's a contract that after legal review, if council would approve this, the mayor would have the option to sign this contract without becoming in front of the City Council. So all of these contracts do go through legal process, they do go through our internal control process. So either the mayor would sign, or if he delegates that down. There's also another update is a clarification about authority to use purchasing cooperatives. There's a, I don't know if you've noticed, but a lot of our directors will find a cooperative and purchase out of there. The advantage of using a cooperative is they've done all of our research, negotiated prices for us, so we don't have to go through the rigorous paperwork and research. And we also have modifications to approved miscellaneous expenditures, and this is kind of a one that staff would really like. Let's see. Part of this is employee milestones, and so this is- This is where, so we, this is, gives us the option of using city funds for paying for volunteers, for boards, whoever volunteers for boards or commissions, or maybe even temporary council service. Mitch? And then we have award and ceremony farewell parties. This is the money that we get to if somebody's retiring after 10 years and they're standing, we get, you know, the cake and a plaque and whatever festivities there are. And then these are milestones. So currently, we have one-year employment, it was zero, but you got a service pin. I'm not even sure where those service pins are, we haven't been really good about that. So at five years, the employment milestone was $0, but we're proposing to move it to 75. And this 75, what we're recommending is the employee will have an option, we would like to get involved with an employee recognition program, there are several bigger companies, and it's something we can put the city of Grand Island logo on, and they could order it, you know, they get a Getty Cup or whatever, but they would have that option of spending that money through that organization. So as you can see here, I won't read through there, so we've changed, it's basically up in each category by $50. So Mitch, you had a question?
Yes, I do have a question, but it's actually a couple of slides back. It refers to the mayor's authority to sign off on the $30,000 or less-
Yes.
-purchase or whatever it would be. Is there any current amount where the mayor can do that?
No. Right now, he does not have any authority to do that.
Therein lies the concern. It looks like-
One of the examples I gave you that we kind of talked about when we were doing this, if you recall, maybe three, four months ago, you had to approve a $1,500 contract for the Building Department to pay for a testing software they wanted to use with, for their, I think it was plumbing tests, if I recall correctly. So there are some that are just so small that, and are relatively form contracts, so this would just give the mayor the choice to. He could still opt to say, you know, this is an important expenditure, I still want it to go to council. This would just let him, if something is so little or so routine, skip on some of those little things.
But I thought it said up to 30,000. Was that what it said, or no?
Yeah, we're actually proposing up to 50, under bid limits.
No, for the mayor to approve.
Yeah.
Yes.
It would actually be in two sections of code, one for the no quote purchases and one for the other, so that'd be one of those things for you guys to give feedback on, if you're comfortable with one choice and maybe not with the other one.
There's a word called transparency, and it's something that's very big, and I don't know what the proper limit is, I don't think it's 50,000, it should just be at a mayoral discretion, because although the mayor we have right now would not let anything go past him, plus being part attorney, it would be to the letter of the law of perfection, but our next mayor may not, or the next mayor two or three terms from now. And there may be political changes that happen where we see more political things where people that are surrounding the mayor and the city administration could just start letting these things go through for up to $50,000 with no oversight by a council really gives me a lot of heartburn, and it should give everybody some heartburn, because that's a big amount of money. Now, if we're talking about a $1,500 thing, that's one thing, but we're talking about $15,000, $30,000, $45,000 with no oversight by more than one person, and of course, we have a legal group if it's a contract or whatever that is, would have those eyes, but if they are in cohorts with a future mayor, who knows what could happen? I don't, I mean, we've seen this before, I can go back to, man, what was it, Bell, California, something like this, years ago, where the City Council and mayor were voting themselves outrageous raises, and there was really, it was just kind of a collusion of the whole group, and this, we're talking about a mayor having that authority, that's not right, that's not right. And in the age that we're in today, it's even more concerning to me.
So would, if we put it at a limit of 10,000, up to 10,000, would that help? And then anything over 10,000 would have to come to council for approval?
Better than 50, and I think the lower the better, I don't want to say 1,000 or 5,000, but you know, 10,000 is probably more reasonable. But this $50,000 thing, again, I'm not concerned about our current mayor at all, I could be very concerned about future mayors and councils and administrations, and I don't want us to go down that path.
We can, I don't have a problem with doing it up to 10. I mean, so if that's council's wishes, then we will change that section just up to 10,000.
I think 10,000, and I want to hear from the council on this, but I think 10,000 is far more defensible than 50,000.
And I would welcome input from the council as well, but it's this transparency thing, and what I've seen in the past, history can repeat itself, and not in Grand Island, but history through people who are not honest, and they start surrounding themselves with people who think like them and, you know, aren't going to say no to anything, some bad things can happen, and I don't want that to happen to Grand Island.
Mr. O'Neil?
Just a couple of questions. I agree with Mitch too on the dollar limit, I feel a lot more comfortable with a lower limit as well. Question for you, Pat, so how many of these transactions go through in a year that are under 10,000 as compared to between 10 to 50,000, rough ballpark? Ballpark, if you can, but-
Oh my gosh. I would say probably 7,500, 10,000 at least.
Under 10,000, and-
Yeah, under 10,000, I mean, because, you know, we have, so a lot of them use our credit card system, and so I could tell you this, I approve approximately about 100 a day, so just doing that math, you know, it's, it's a bunch.
And then between the 10 and 50,000, you think significantly less in that range?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, you'll see, there's a, you know, our magic number is 10,000, and I will tell you this, if it's a dollar over 10,000, our directors will do anything and everything to get it below, get it to 999, so, because they don't want to go shopping for quotes, okay?
I imagine.
I mean, it's just, it is, sometimes it's a pain, but it's got to be done, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Pollak?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Pat, I would be in agreement with Ryan and Mitch, I think 10,000 may not be a good number, but it's a number. We've worked under this system forever, and if we have problems with what's being spent, every two weeks we get a list of all the expenditures that go out of here.
Yeah.
And if you have a big expenditure on there that you don't know what it is, it's not a problem for me to pick up the phone and talk to somebody.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's no problem, I mean, this is what this session is for, so, no, I appreciate that feedback, so.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I just want to be clear, we're not talking about changing your authority from 30 to 10, we're talking about contracts going to 10. We're still keeping the 50,000 limit on things that you don't have to get-
That there will have to be three quotes.
At 50.
From 10 to 50, there'll have to be three quotes.
But after 50, you have to put out like requests or proposals or purchase or-
Absolutely, yes.
Invitation to bid.
Yes, a formal process.
The only thing we're saying doesn't, the only thing we're saying at the 10,000 though is that contracts.
Yes.
Gotcha. And those contracts, would that be a 10,000 recurring? Is that per year on a contract that you could sign?
We go by the total amount, so if it's, let's just say a three years, it's $5,000, okay, that would come to you as a contract, because it's 15,000.
Okay, that was my question there. All right, thank you. And I agree then with that, that's a good change.
Let's see, miscellaneous, let's go back there. As you notice in this packet, this was quite large, so this-
A lot of this just kind of cleanup?
It is, it is mostly cleanup. The miscellaneous, and I'll get right down here to this section, and so one of the things that we've kind of run into is, so for example, utilities holds like a training for other utility companies, and they come in, they can't buy bottled water or a lunch or anything, and so it would be nice for them to be able to buy, you know, a lunch for these folks. Sometimes, you know, if there's a fee, you know, for the training or whatever, it's included in that fee, however, sometimes we have consultants in, and we'll be in our Fishbowl Conference Room for most of the day, so it'd be nice to have the option of providing water or a meal. So with miscellaneous expenditures, I really kind of want to go through this line by line. So the registration cost, tuitions, that's the same, the travel costs are, it's the same with travel policy and procedures, and I'll show you what we have authorized expenditures. Shall not include expenses for meals for city council members provided while attending a public meeting of city council unless such a meeting is a joint meeting. So that is, that is no change there. So where we get down to here is non-alcoholic beverages and meals that can be provided. This is, the first bullet is no change to that. Well, I think we might have added severe storm, but I'm not sure on that, it's not crossed out, so I think it was in there. Volunteers, following participation in any activity in city council, picking up litter, removing graffiti, that's the same. Here's a change, every year we always provide a, we call it a recognition meal for staff, and this is always around Christmas, and volunteers or old and ex-employees were invited. What we're recommending here is the $19 limit goes back probably 30 years, I mean, it's very old. So we're proposing to put in the General Services Administration the dinner per diem for Nebraska, and it is currently $28 for that. So if the per diem changes, then that dollar amount would change as well. And so what I was describing before, so if we have meetings that are in excess of four hours, such as conferences, trainings, or other cooperative gatherings, that we'd have an option of buying a lunch or beverages or what have you. Now, in the policies and procedures that we are drafting, which I will show you where we are at this time, directors would need to get approval from either myself or from the city administrator before they buy such food or drinks, just so that we provide that oversight. We don't want that to get away from us. Below is just what I had reviewed already, the milestones, employee recognition, and basically, and I'll show you a little bit of our policies and procedures, it is in draft form. We are working with directors with it, and we've come a long way, actually. So we have 25 pages, and I don't know what that is, but anyway, table of contents, we will have everything in here. Matter of fact, just the other day, it was actually today, I was talking to our grants person, and one, two of our grants are being audited by the state of Nebraska. It is the VOCA grant, which is Victims Assistance, I believe, and then the grant we got for helping for security at an election. And so they sent out a criteria of what they want. One of the criteria was a supply management or an asset management system, where we have basically four to five in the city, and so it's probably a good idea to add, incorporate that into our purchasing policy to make sure that all departments know all the information that needs to come to accounting, and making sure that these assets are tracked and tagged. So again, this is a living document, but this is what directors will use as they go through if they have questions. As you can see, we have travel, training, credit card, disposal of surplus property, and so we're trying to address, I know we'll never have all situations, but we're going to have most of them, because weird situations pop up all the time, so we're going to rely heavily on these policies and procedures. So authorization, another key change is authorization of limited source procurement as may be necessary to maintain and extend the value of prior purchases. Basically- Basically, what this is, is for maintenance contracts on computer software. So if we buy a software and it comes with a three-year maintenance agreement, after three years, do we have to go out and then rebid it? Well, our code, city code says, yes, you do. And so that is not good a use of city staff time or resources. And so this is helping us just go ahead and renew that, uh, maintenance agreement. However, we do have, and I don't know if it's in city code or not, um, but we have a ten-year period. After ten years, it needs to be rebid. So, um, plain and simple, you get ten years. Yes. Oh, sorry.
Mr. O'Neil.
Uh, Pat, just a question, is that just for maintenance agreements? Otherwise, about any software thing anymore has turned into subscription-based?
Anything subscription-based?
Clarify.
Um, yeah, uh, it can also, we have, um, this would also apply to, like, there's, uh, wastewater, like clarifier stuff that is, it's actually sole source, but it's just so unique that, you know, you can't rebid the whole system. It's just, it, it doesn't make monetary sense, so.
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, some of those are pretty, you're pretty tied into, but they just make you rent it now, basically.
Yes, yeah.
I assure your frustration.
Uh, let's see, and then, uh, last one is clear authority for the purchasing agent, uh, along with the, uh, city attorney to develop manuals, procedures, forms, and policies that may be necessary. So, um, those were the key changes, uh, of, of what we want to bring forward to you. Um, Mike?
Are we looking at hiring a person for this job?
Right here.
I'm sorry.
Other duties as assigned. So, no, it's, and, and Mike, let me tell you this, and I, I think this will re- resonate with everyone. So in, in kind of, I've already started doing this, and this is a slight to no one. But when it comes to my desk, I look at it at different eyes. You know, so legal will look at it, is this a legal contract? Was this a legal solicitation? And I get that, and we need that. But when I look at it and I see, you know, police department buys a policy software, okay, wow, that would have been helpful because it really would have helped everyone. And so, you know, now it's just tied to them. And so it's more of a global look at our purchasing. And there's opportunities here. Uh, for example, we buy a lot of office supplies. Uh, it would be nice to negotiate, maybe somebody local, that you give us a discount and we'll come to you. And trying to group all those different purchases, and yes, it is kind of moving to a centralized purchasing. And culturally, that will be not good, but it's, it's baby steps, so.
Yeah, but I think, I like it resting with you because you have a thirty-thousand-foot view of all the city financials. And I know it's happened in the past where something will come across your desk and you'll say, well, this was a great idea, a great idea, but it would have been a great idea for all departments, as opposed to one distinct department implementing something. So I know you've done that in the past, so, uh, that's why I like the idea of you being at the head of this.
So just for purchasing agent for dummies, which is me, exactly, just go again, let me know again what, what your role will become, and in the course of a busy day, that you already said you have to sign off on a hundred purchases a day, apparently at least check them out. What is this, what's the typical day in the eyes of this purchasing agent? What's it like? And my second question will, do you have time to do that? But let's get to the first point first.
So, so I am also in, in the internal control of all the requisitions and POs. So I'm the last stop. So if somebody wants to buy, well, this happened today. Say somebody at the police department wants to buy a canine. And so they put in a requisition, uh, at the police department. That requisition then goes to Kevin, police chief. He signs off, goes to, uh, accounts payable, uh, Carmen signs off, and then it goes to Matt Gleason, Finance Director, and then, uh, comes to me for final. So there's checks all the way through here. So I will look at those POs. I am the final sign-off on credit cards. So, uh, I just go in and look at all the credit cards that were used, uh, for the day. So, um, I look at those on all those purchases. You get a pretty good eye after a while of what you're looking for. For utilities, I go into their software and approve all of their POs. They have probably, oh, thirty to forty a day, so, um, so that's the daily activities for that.
How many hours of the day does that take?
Oh, less than an hour.
You're able to just pretty much skim them, and you, again, you know, based on your knowledge of what you're looking for, so you can skim through those pretty quickly?
Yeah, and then, uh, so then for RFPs, uh, Jill, how many do we do a month? Probably what, five to ten? Yeah. Yeah. So five to ten, and so that's a, that's a more of a, that's more of a process. So there is formal paperwork. Uh, we've built templates now that they need to do for requests for proposal or res- or requests for bids. And so those come from departments. Um, they go to legal and they go to myself. Legal looks for all the, all the legal stuff, and then I look at all, all the other stuff. And so those reviews, they'll take a half hour, uh, for each one because you want to go through with good detail and make sure that, you know, that, that the solicitation is, um, fair. You know, so you don't want to, um, say, I want a name brand. We try not to do that. We're trying to get all the bids that we possibly can so we get the lowest cost. And, uh, from there, um, some of the purchases that are, um, from, uh, between ten to thirty, I make sure they have the quotes. Uh, if they don't have the quotes, I follow up going, you know, where's your quotes at? So there's still a lot of kind of training going on, uh, with folks, uh, especially on uploading documents uh, to make sure that we have the evidence, uh, for our audits.
But with, in the course of everything else that goes on in a day, as the purchasing agent, primary person in charge of this, is there time for a person in your position, not, and the next person that might be in your position? Or is this a good fit for that person's use of time? Will it overwhelm them, or has it just become part of the procedure?
It's, it's a good fit, and I will tell you, it's a lot of work right now. However, and you'll see this during our budget process, you're going to see Mr. Schultz a lot more often during the budget process. So he, I'm trying to bring him along so that he understands it and can run that process. I'll always have part of that process because I like that process. But he'll take more of the day-to-day, um, of that process, making sure that everybody's within budgets and stuff like that. So, um, and I know Laura has, has mentioned, you know, she, she's got projects for me as well, so, um, which I would be excited for, so.
So, so part of this proposed restructuring of purchasing is, as the CFO, um, having Pat's position be designated as the, um, purchasing agent who has oversight over the whole purchasing program citywide. Uh, if you look at twenty-seven dash five, which is the language amending or adding to that definition, it actually allows, authorizes the purchasing agent to use one or more designees to perform their duties as needed. So as the CFO, Pat is directly responsible for supervising our Finance Director, um, the Assistant Finance Director, and the entire Finance Department. So we have the skills, um, and the talents in that department to be able to provide him with assistance. Right now, uh, what we're working on is getting the structure down so that it is efficient um, and comprehensive and making sure that we are, we're just setting up the, the parameters and the structure of having a consolidated purchasing program. Because as you mentioned, I, I couldn't even tell, well, we have fifteen departments. We probably have fifteen different office supply procurement contracts. That means we're losing out on discounts we could get for bulk. So it's that type of, of oversight and consolidation that we're looking to achieve in order to be more efficient with taxpayer resources. And then obviously being careful with Pat's time, but with his skills and his knowledge and his ability to oversee all of it, it makes sense for him to, that position as the CFO to be designated as the purchasing agent with the understanding that he would be able to delegate some of those duties as we get the program finalized, we get it running well, and then we can train other people to assist. And just one more point in terms of, you know, reviewing those credit card, um, charges, reviewing, um, the purchase orders, reviewing the RFPs. Each department is participating in that prior to that Pat's review.
Yes, I would hope so.
Yes, so each, each department is developing it, and his are the final eyes on it for budget compliance, for making sure that it, it achieves all of our goals.
I, I couldn't agree more with the, the way you're moving forward. Just want to make sure it's something that, that you can handle on top of the other things and the other projects that she's going to have for you, you know, which is. And, but being able to designate helpers is always good. And I was just curious if you see something that doesn't look right on a credit card purchase, you just raise a red flag and question that and then say, what did this?
Literally, a red flag, literally.
It's like, what did you do and why'd you do it and?
Yes.
And correct any errors that were made or poor judgment or whatever it could be.
Yeah, uh, matter of fact, today, and I'll just tell you example, uh, going through there, there was, I think it was either twenty-three or twenty-seven hundred dollars for, it's called four imprint. And it's like, what's this for? And it's wastewater. So it's for, uh, stormwater, uh, programs that they have. It was like a five-pronged highlighter with, and then also flyers. But I think they go to different schools and different places, and then they give this stuff out, so. But it's just, you know, you don't see that kind of transaction much in the city, and that's why you just, you just pick it up and going, hey, what's, what's up, so.
Well, and then I'm kind of curious how you plan on going about this, more of this umbrella approach of bulk purchasing. How do we change the current example of if we had fifteen different people going to fifteen different suppliers? How do you start corralling that to, to come together on, you know, office supplies or whatever it is? So we're one sourcing that or at least funding, how do you, how do, how do you corral all of this now to make it work effectively going forward?
So in my mind, it's, it's a conversation with the directors and their admin assistants. It's, it's not a conversation, it's a conversation and email. But then it's also, uh, with the vendor. So the vendor might have, say it's an office supply store in Grand Island, and they might have ten accounts from Grand Island, and each one to a different department. And it's like, okay, it's one account, and we need to know what department is paying for it. And so that's how we'll get there.
You, you bring up an interesting situation when I was managing a galvanizing facility. And, and this may happen here in Grand Island at department directors, that somebody has always supplied that person, that department.
Yes.
Always supplied them. And this relationship goes for twenty years, thirty years, however long. I had to make changes at times to break relationships that had been there for twenty, thirty years for my predecessors because it really wasn't the best supplier. And I don't know if any of those scenarios are here, but I made some enemies, made some very, you know, angry people angrier. But we just had to cut some suppliers that we'd had, and it's like, well, the guy before you always bought from us and they bought from me, and it's like, well, you're not giving us the best deal. So I don't know if that's going on, but that's a great opportunity for a purchase agent to kind of oversee and say, do we have anybody that's just always worked with a supplier and it's kind of a buddy-buddy system? I don't know. I mean, it is, it can happen whether it's happening here or not. I know it happened before. But a lot of good things for you.
Absolutely do.
A lot of good things for you to dig into. So I think you're going to be pretty busy here for a little bit, but it's, it's the right direction. I really do.
I think once the framework is up, we can start digging a little bit deeper, and it'll, it'll be fine.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Alrighty, thank you. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. Uh, I guess I've been an employee at the school district when we had certain procedures we had to follow. And looking at all of the changes, I'm hoping that we have built in some time for everyone to learn this and some marketing, internal marketing and communications to showcase how they can, how this is changing for them um, in a grace period, uh, because, I don't know, I just want to make sure it's simpler for people, and it sounds like that's a goal, right?
Yeah, and, and that's the goal of the policies and procedures, is I, I want you to have a resource that you can go to because now, I will tell you, it's not written down. So, I mean, it's.
A great way for me not to follow your plan.
Yes.
It's not to have one.
Right, right. So it's, it's just a resource. It's like, hey, if you got a question, go to, go to here. And, and like I said, we're trying to build it as, with as much information as we possibly can. Uh, sometimes people ask, oh, well, what cooperative can I use? Well, here's a list. Here's a current list that would, that city attorney has checked out, meets all of our qualifications. Use this list, so.
And I know he's bored, but I would suggest maybe leveraging Spencer to do some, uh, support of whatever you, we end up with to, uh, make sure that all employees and all directors, everybody knows so they can follow the rules and know the purpose behind it, uh, just for implementing something like this.
I, I want to point out that the approach that Pat took, um, I have to give him great kudos on this. What he did is he drafted the procedures manual and started with that, and we distributed it to the departments and to the administrative staff that, that are in charge of purchasing. And we had them go through that manual, the how-to manual, and tell us, does this work? Does this fit what you're currently doing? Do you see problems with it? We vetted it in two department head meetings. And then we took that final product and used it to create the proposed changes to city code for the policy for you to adopt. Um, and it really was a very productive process that we, we have our, I, I feel like we have the city team on board with these changes before we act, ever actually came to you with recommendations to amend the code, to change the policy.
Mr. Nickerson.
Just one more quick observation, that's, things like this take a long time to do it right, so it sounds like you're doing that. And that's always a good thing. If you try to rush something, then you go back and redo it and redo it and redo it. So it sounds like it's a perfect approach for anything that we do. For Carrie, our city attorney, this frees up Stacy's time, doesn't it? Because, um, apparently she's been doing a lot of things that Pat was just telling us that he's been doing. So what's that do for you in, in the legal side?
Yeah, it, I think like Pat pointed out, he can do a lot of those tasks just more efficiently. He has that big, broad-based knowledge. So I think it'll free up a lot of Stacy's time to do lawyer work rather than accounting work or big-picture budget work. Um, and there are just things, he, he knows the answer already. She would have had to go look at it. So he probably can do the tasks five times faster and with that more strategic focus. So it'll give us a lot more time to do the things you pay Stacy and I to do and less time with the finance folks having to walk two lawyers through accounting principles, which I'm sure Pat will take, that'll take, some of that stress we add to him in these daily tasks, he will gladly, uh, swap out for not explaining budget stuff to lawyers.
There we go. Very good.
Mr. Pollak.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank administration for taking this on because I worked under it for thirty years, and it was, it was a monster. Utilities did it one way, street did it another. It, yeah. If, if you get it down and you get it running smooth, it'll be great.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, like Laura said, some of these, uh, department director meetings that we had, wow, there were some stories. So, you know, there's a lot of different situations. were some stories, so, you know, there's a lot of different situations, right?
Got a day sometime, I'll stop by your office.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you for your excellent presentation.
Thank you.
We have completed our agenda, we are adjourned, have a nice evening, everybody.
We can leave now.